Well, thank you very much.
Thanks. Good luck Thursday.
Yes. Okay, we will move on then to item F2, Discussion of Board Meeting Agenda Automation. And Dr. Cash, I believe you are going to enlighten us on this.
Yes. Well, is the board interested in entering the 21st century? I bet the answer to that question is yes. So, whether we're ready or not, here we are. In attempting to do so, other districts and public agencies across the nation have put their working agendas online and made them available electronically to themselves and to the rest of the community. And I had the great fortune to be part of a rollout of that in my previous district. And the program that we use is the example of one that you have before you called Novus Agenda. What I can tell you about it is that there's data in here that is not specific to our school district. It's illustrative of the kinds of savings and where the savings can be found. I can tell you that that was not the primary purpose for moving to a paperless agenda system in Clovis. The primary purpose really was to, more of a green movement, to eliminate the use of paper. But the cost savings were substantial, six figures were the cost savings, as a result of the amount of time and, in particular, the production costs and the mailing costs that were required. Really, also, what it becomes is a great way for board members to have an ongoing notation system of what's happening, because they can do that electronically. If they have a small tablet, if that's their instrument of choice, they can take the tablet with them with access to the Internet and notate the board agenda for your questions or issues that you have anywhere that you might be and not have to carry around a three-inch, three-ring binder with you. I would also say one of the wonderful things about it is that, at least from my experiences, it's not as scary as it might seem initially to move to a paperless agenda process. I had board members that didn't have home computers who successfully transitioned to electronic agenda. Novus is an example of one. It's one I'm familiar with. There's lots of them out there. I can tell you that we looked at about six other companies and eliminated them primarily because, another reason why we might consider paperless is because it eases the burden on staff substantially as far as how we go through the process of generating the agenda items and the approval process that goes through. And the amount of paperwork that we utilize and then back and forth, the conversations are all quite simply done electronically via email or simply on the program itself in a spot for notes. And it simplifies that action quite a bit. So, I had to be honest and give you my selfish reason for wanting you to consider that, other than the obvious cost savings. And I believe really ease of use for you down the line as far as how you see your role as a board member and how you interact with the community and the access to the materials that you would have when you are interacting with the community. So, I only have Novus before you because if you're interested, I'd love to have them come in and we could go. I would suggest pairing up. It's always good, I've found in technology, to have a buddy and go through and meet with the Novus Agenda people and have them run through one of our own agendas so that you could see how it works, what it would look like, and ask your questions and decide for yourself whether you'd like to have this come back for an action item at some point in the future.
Ms. Parker?
Well, since I've been trying to transition this way, I am so excited. I think that this is a terrific idea beyond the estimated 132,000 in savings to us, which, you know, is substantial and would really affect some of the other things that we could possibly do, including things like Spanish translation. What I've noticed is that, you know, I now have the capacity to interact with the PDFs that are online, but I'm using a specific app. You know, I'm saving it on my own iPad and therefore, you know, once the meeting's over, I really need to delete what's going on. I love this idea of being able to go back to past agendas and look at, you know, any notes that I made in the past about something that happened a year ago or two years ago or whatever, you know, as it comes back up again. I'm trying to see a downside to this change. And, you know, obviously, I'm sure that there -- and I'd be very interested in talking to them, because there must be glitches that come up. You know, what happens if your Internet is down, that kind of thing. So, there are things to talk about, but I'm very interested in moving in this direction.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, obviously, I am too. I gave Mimi instructions that I don't need a book anymore. So, we're one less book.
Ms. Deacon?
Just a couple of quick questions. If we were to do this, I noticed there's a person identified as the agenda preparer. Would that be Mimi?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And we do provide copies, hard copies of things for the public. And quite often, those go wasted. But I don't know if there's any way to avoid that. Or, I mean, the public is -- would we be eliminating that option for the public?
Well, that could be accomplished in one of two ways. We could continue to provide the paperwork or we could provide a computer station in the boardroom. They could print out the documents that they want.
Attachments they wanted.
And they could simply access the computer screen. And if they had a tablet or a laptop themselves, they could simply access it themselves on the Internet. So, yes, that is obviously a consideration, the copies for the public. And I think we always made at least one hard copy for the back of the room, but we also had a computer station available for members of the public to use when they came to a board meeting. So, that would just be, that's kind of a cultural thing, you know? It would be whatever the board felt comfortable doing. If you wanted five copies, 10 copies, it would certainly be substantially less than what we're currently producing, so.
Ms. Lamont?
Let's do it. I mean, it's the way to go. And I have to tell a story. I took this, not this one, this one's smaller, binder on a trip that I went to on a long holiday weekend because there was going to be no Internet. And the group of people I was with were looking at me like, "You can't do this online," or "Why do you have such a thick packet?" And I was like, "I know, I know. We're getting there." So, I'm ready to do it.
I do have to comment. A lot of the savings that relate to labor, you know, there's really not a savings there. Those same people will be doing something else. So, we can't count all that 138,000, but a lot of it.
Well, the amount of time is substantially less. It's interesting. We did do a time study in Clovis with the board clerk, which was a separate position, and the amount of time he spent producing the paper document versus the paperless document. So, it was interesting. He told me at one point, he said, "Am I working myself out of a full-time job here by ...?" I said, "No, we'll find something else for you to do."
Right. So, that's my point. The savings, you know, we'd just be saving money from our function, but somebody else will pick up those people and the cost will still be there. We won't have 130,000 go out and spend someplace.
Right.
Well, and I'll chime in on that. It may mean that we don't need to hire somebody else because we'll be able to redirect tasks. So, that could be a concrete savings, especially as we do more and more things on the Internet.
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think the less paper we can use, the better. And especially when so much of it, you know, a lot of these, we read them, we go through them, but then ultimately, we just discard them. And so, it's, there's a few things that we save and go back to and, you know, review, or that we save thinking we're going to go back to it and never actually do. So, you know, I just think that it's a great idea. I personally have to say that I like pen paper. You know, I like to be able to highlight things while I'm reading, which I know that you can accomplish the same thing online, but it's not the same kinesthetic involvement. So, this will be, I think, a challenge for me, but I think it's something that we need to do. I'm all for trying it out. And I want Kate to be my partner. Okay, Ms. Lamont?
So, I do have one question. And we may not actually have answers for this now, but you mentioned that in the last district that you tried this out, there were board members who didn't have it. So, I don't know if that's been a consideration, like if there are board members who don't have a personal tablet or a personal laptop. Is that something that the district is going to consider?
Yes, we're going to provide the, whatever, you know, what we'll do is when we have, if we'll have Novus come, there'll be a laptop and a tablet and whatever is the most comfortable of those two, or a tablet with a keyboard. I know that I've seen a lot of people use those because they're more comfortable with that as opposed to the touchscreen. Those will be options for people. Because the really is, it has to be useful and easy to use for you all. And so, I don't want to impose, you know, you have to use, you need to have a laptop. You should be able to pick what you want.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that at some point, we'll just also consider if someone doesn't have one, the laptop, the Internet access, that kind of stuff that goes along with all this kind of. I just, I would hate for something like this to limit someone in the future if they don't have access to that. They feel like, well, okay, this is what I need to use. But, I mean, and they could. They could. It's fair enough. They could use, you know, their own money for it, but I want to be considerate of who has access to what type of technology.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. It sounds like we're all in agreement that we want to pursue this.
Get ready.
I'm excited. I know. I think everybody wants Kate as a partner. But I call dibs first. Okay. F3, Discussion of Broadcasting Board Meetings in Spanish. And Ms. Keaney will present this. I think this is an issue that we have brought up many times over the course of the times that I've been on the board. And I know Mr. Herron has raised this issue a few times in his tenure. So, I'm interested in how we can move forward with this.
Well, there has been some new information even since I wrote this memo. And one of the, there's no question, we're sort of in uncharted, untested waters here. But it's something that I think with all these heads that are coming together is doable. What fashion, which direction we take is still unclear. But some interesting ideas even came up as late, as recently as this afternoon from some of our facilities folks. But the three areas that I wanted to reiterate that have been sort of problematic are the areas of the broadcast schedule, which actually, we've kind of worked that out now that Channel 18, which is a public access channel, has said that they would now welcome not putting the, if we were to get, have a DVD or something ready for them, that they would do it in the midday, not at 2:00 in the morning, as has been the situation for a long time. So, I am absolutely delighted on that. That is a major step. And they are looking towards partnering that or putting that alongside their Spanish city council meetings to form a block of programming, which I thought, okay, we're going on a path now that's finally very productive from that avenue. So, we still have a couple of other areas that are to be resolved. And one of them is the people piece, because we don't have translators, many of them that are available beyond 10:00. And our current translator is usually only here for two hours. But a suggestion that I just got today from one of our facilities fellows is that we might be able to do something where we can, if we acquire a mixer and a dual-deck DVD recorder, be able to tape the meeting the way we always do, but then have the translator at their convenience actually translate into Spanish. So, I thought, okay, we're making progress here on this whole front. And so, that seems like an exciting proposition, because then potentially, it would open us up to more people on staff in addition to Vivian Rodriguez, who is generally our translator that might be able to do this. So, again, it's another avenue. I asked if there was even a ballpark cost that they could give me on something like this, which, again, it's untested, but it's worth looking at. And he said, "Well," he said, "I think between 2,000 to 3,000 would be what it would take to just, to come up with this. Assuming that it works, we need to have more input, but at least it looks like it's promising." So, I wanted to report that back into you. And then, so that's the equipment piece. And then, as I say, the translator and having someone available here at the meeting, that is a, it's a physical challenge as well as a time challenge. There are several things. The superintendent has brought up one idea of maybe using the little conference room on the other side of that wall as a place where we could station a translator if these other options didn't work and if we needed to have a translator on site. There are other things that have come up through other discussions I've had with other school districts regarding, you know, do you have one translator? Do you have more than one to do something like that? Because it's a very intense process to do it. So, you may need to have two people. Again, so that's just another piece, another wrinkle in this that we still have to resolve to say, what is the manpower need? And right now, the idea of being able to take an existing DVD in English and then just do a translation in Spanish, that looks, again, the least expensive and potentially most promising. The other avenue, we worked, excuse me, I'm getting rid of my cold. The other avenue is to piggyback on to what Dr. Cash has told you about the Novus system. And they would be able to take our meetings and basically translate at the same time as the meetings are going on. They would be feeding to someone in Texas who would be translating. And then the finished piece would be online, would be streamed online within one to two hours after the actual meeting. So, there's technology, but there is a cost on that. And as you saw in the memo that I sent you, it's, the startup cost is a little expensive. It's over $10,000. And then the monthly cost for the translation of every board meeting, if it's a four-hour meeting, it'd be a minimum of $300. So, those are all to be weighed out. So, right now, we're looking at a higher tech version, potentially online. But the question becomes also, would families have access to a computer to access that? So, there's another, there's a little piece there that we have to consider if we were to think about that avenue versus trying to stay with the public access TV, which they don't charge us anything to get on there. And folks, I think, would be more apt to have access to television than they would to a computer. So, those are the things that have come up of late. And just wanted to get some feedback from you on what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I just want to say I'm really happy that we're moving forward with this. Several years ago, you participated when Mr. Gonzalez and I did the video for
Yes.
And at that time, we talked about how the city council does it and the way that they get their meetings on. And it was somewhat costly, and I think that's why we didn't pursue that further. But I'm really happy that sort of the time has come to really address that. I feel like we really need to just accept it as a cost of doing business and roll it into our operating budget. It's just something that's not, not a, shouldn't be optional anymore, that we need to just say, this is part of our expenses for being the district that we are. So, I'm hoping that we will do that in whatever form seems to work the best. I think we need to have some additional discussions about translators, because it has always concerned me that our translators are only here for a short period of time. That's a different issue. I'm happy that we're moving on this. So, I would really, I thank you for the work that you put into researching and finding out. And I am hopeful that we will be moving forward on it.
Okay.
Mr. Herron and then Ms. Lamont?
Just thought of three comments. I mentioned earlier about the Bishop branch and the Gleda Council. I got the email from the constituent probably 11:00 at night. I read it the next morning. I didn't read 11:00 at night. But I immediately went to the Gleda City Council's website and watched it. It's streamed. It's there. The agenda is there. If you want to watch E2, you can hit on E2 and it plays it. You don't have to watch the entire DVD trying to catch E2. Is there any reason that's either or? I mean, could we go with the streaming and also give them a DVD for Channel 18 and have them play it Sunday afternoon?
I don't think that would be
If there's no cost.
I don't think that would be an issue, because it's two separate technologies, two separate systems. So, if the board were to decide that they wanted to go that direction, I certainly think we can look into that.
I'd like to look into whether we can do both.
Yeah.
And what the cost is. Two, why is our salary range for district translator so low?
I brought Elaine Alvarado here since she deals with the HR side of the house. And I asked her she could please stay because that has to do with contracts and it's not something that I have been involved in. So, Elaine?
Certainly, we have looked at this as far as the cost of our district translator. And in fact, we increased our range for our district translator to the highest classified bargaining negotiated salary range, which is range 60. The top of that range is, I don't have it in front of me, but it's about $37 an hour. And it's within our contract. It's within our salary schedule. So, and it's been accepted by this translator, our district translator official one, which is Minithor Laxent. So, at that rate, we obviously are limited. We would have to renegotiate our salary schedule. When we're looking outside, as Barbara has done numerous times, we're looking at anywhere from $75 to $150 an hour for a state-certified translator. And so, we're, that's why we have that range at range 60. When we bring in staff to come to our board meetings and our hourly translators, they're being paid $25 an hour, which is our hourly rate that we've paid over the years.
Okay. It just seems like if one of our problems is we're not paying enough, therefore, we have one, it seems the solution is you pay more, so you have a bigger pool.
Correct.
I mean, it bothers me that we're stymied because we only have one translator. That's not a reason for not doing this project. I mean, we need to figure out how we can have more translators. So, I'm very much in favor of the streaming. I'm very much, whether it's captions, I mean, they have a program, I guess, where you can have captions versus live.
Captions or audio.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe it's a work in progress. You go captions and then eventually go, you know, actual. But I just don't think there's any reason we don't do this. I mean, I don't, we've talked about it. We've been, you know, it just seems, you know, and the fact that nobody makes use of our stuff now, I don't buy that as an argument. I mean, how many times do we tell people to go to Channel 18 because it's there? If we had Spanish, we'd be saying, you know, go 2:00 on Sunday for the Spanish translation. Or we'd go to our website and see it in Spanish. We would do a proactive to the parents. We want your involvement. It's in Spanish, whether it's at a computer terminal or TV. We need to make it available. And then if nobody uses it, that's a different question. But the fact that nobody gets our agendas, or, you know, 20 people look at it, 16 from the district, that's because there's no outreach. And I think if we had outreach, if we don't get our founders involved, we're not going to get the students involved.
And that was to provide a baseline, to get an idea of where we are, so we know, you know, we can assess where we're going and measure how we're doing.
I understand that. But I hope it's not a reason for not doing it.
Lamont?
Well, I'm really excited. And I actually have to give kudos to Ms. Keaney, because what you don't know is that she did research with other districts to see what worked and what didn't work. And we're actually ahead of the game. And I was really happy to hear, not that other districts are not doing this, which I don't think is a good idea, but that we're ahead of the game. We're really thinking about this. And I think this also complements several agenda items that we've discussed. I mean, we talked about the Carmen Core and the importance of getting parents involved. Well, we need to give parents the tools. And for me, this is a tool. This is really a tool to increase parent involvement. And I hope that it doesn't go, it doesn't have to be to, limited to us reminding the audience that it's going to be on Channel 18, but that some of our parent groups, our district-affiliated parent groups, actually get training on how to go online. Get training in both English and Spanish. Get, you know, know that they can go to Channel 18. They know the schedule, whatever it is. So, I'm actually really excited. I'm very supportive of exploring, I think, both options. We may have to transition. I don't know if we can go full-blown right away, but we may have to take baby steps and get to a big end goal. And yeah, I want to thank you for all the work you did.
You're welcome.
Ms. Parker?
I'm also really excited about this. I was really looking at it in direct context and comparison with F2 and saying, okay, well, because the reason we haven't done this has been largely because of money. And it's always been a hang-up. And I feel like, you know, it's nice to make that kind of trade-off directly so that, you know, we can move forward without people saying, you know, what are we losing because we're doing this, you know, we're making this choice? And so, I think that this is terrific. I know that the reason that we haven't paid the, you know, looked to increase that range even further is because it will cost more. But I do think it's extremely important. If we are so out of whack with what's going on in the larger community, we won't get people to do the job. And so, I do think that that's something that we need to look at as part of this, especially because we may need to, I mean, we don't have enough translation services as it is. And if we're adding in somebody having to do, you know, three hours of board translation, then they're, we're going to, we're going to need to hire. I am much more interested in option one rather than option two. The, I do think that, I mean, I've seen this with all of our, with our elementary schools and secondary schools. We have so much information on the web from the schools themselves that, you know, that they are explaining to parents that it's on the web and it's still not being accessed by our Spanish-language parents. For television streaming or for that kind of video streaming in particular, you'd need to have a high-speed connection. And I, that may be something that maybe, you know, three or four years from now would be appropriate. It would also be interesting to hear from the local cities that use this, what's the difference, you know, in terms of television ratings versus number of hits on a particular video streaming link. And I don't know if they can, if they can rate whether it's being viewed in Spanish or not. I don't know if they can, if they can tell if it's, if they, that would be interesting if they could have that information. So, option one is the one that I'm most interested in because I'm also looking at the cost. Even hiring, if we were to up the range to say, you know, $75 an hour for three hours a meeting, 30 meetings a year, it's so much less expensive than option two. So, that would be the first direction that I would be interested in going in.
Okay. Going down the row here. I guess my question would be, which option best serves our Spanish-language constituents? And so, that would be what would guide me. I suspect it would be the Channel 18, but I don't know for sure. But I think that we know that that would be more accessible initially than probably the streaming. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that, and we all know this, but just because you're bilingual doesn't mean you're a translator. And I am concerned about the quality of the translation. And I want to make absolutely sure that, especially if we're putting it out on television and/or the web, it has to be accurate, precise, and up to the professional standards. And it seems to me if we were to record a DVD and then have someone watch it and translate into Spanish, that's more simple than simultaneous translation. Simultaneous translation is really difficult. And people go to school for many years to learn how to do that. So, provided that someone was able to make that translation task, that they could, that they could actually perform that, you could stop and start the DVD. And so, you wouldn't be doing it the way you would be doing it live, which would be easier, I think, on the person doing the translating. So, at any rate, I like both options, but I, first of all, I want to make sure that we're picking the option that is most likely to be used by a wider group of people.
Yeah. And I just want to add to that. And I think you get the idea, so I don't want to belabor that. You know, TV, I think, is probably easier, more inclusive. And we definitely want the high-quality translator, so we definitely need to up the pay. And I just want to, the one thing I do want to add is I hope that as a board, we will make a commitment to do this for a while, because sometimes we, people try things and it doesn't succeed right away. And so, then they drop it. And since our community has had decades of being, of not being included in this, we need to give them some time to sort of change the climate and change the culture of how people interact with the school district so that they know it is available, that they get to the point of, you know, including it in what they watch, including, finding it when it's aired, et cetera. So, I hope that we will, I know you will, thank you, that I hope we will, the board, will make sure that we give it a lengthy, you know, time to get established before we evaluate it too harshly. Because I think it's really necessary. And I think all of us know, I encounter so many people in the community who tell me they watch all of us know, I encounter so many people in the community who tell me they watch the board meetings, it's surprising to me, because you don't, you know, you don't think of this as something that people would spend a lot of time, you know, committed to on watching on TV, and yet people do, and they consider it important, and they pay attention to the issues, and they learn about what's going on in our district. So I think certainly our Spanish-speaking population would be just as, as interested and committed, so I want to make sure they get that opportunity. So thank you. I think we're all very happy that you're taking this forward.
Yeah, just one other comment is, is to watch agendas in the 21st century, I urge you all to take a look at Greta City, go to Greta City, look at their agenda, look at the streaming. Right now, you say, you, I hear all the time, people say they watch the school board, but that's because they're channel-flipping and they happen to see one item. But those people who want to see, okay, what did you talk about in special ed? Either have to go to, make sure they watch the whole thing to find out when it comes up on Saturday night, which is, you know, that's great if they have that time, or get the DVD from you, but they have to watch the whole thing. But this new, this Greta City Council, by item-by-item, you can choose what you want at, at your leisure, whenever you want to do it. You can really in-depth look at it, which serves not, that serves the entire population, not just Spanish. But if it was also in Spanish, that would be even that much better. But it sure is a good example of what is currently being done that makes what we're doing very antiquated.
Indexing is one of the features that you get with the online streaming, so you pay for it, but you also get something back that's very significant.
You know, we want our students to be 21st century, you know, take a look at what's going on out there, and it looks, it's fantastic. Thank you very much.
The other thing is, we have the advantage of having some great Delac organizations or Elac organizations and terrific working relationship with the media, so that will help us get the information out, so.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lamont, one last comment?
One last comment. I would just like to propose that the next time this comes to us, perhaps a recommendation or a kind of timeline, because I'm hearing that both ideas are great, but perhaps not both ideas are something we can do year one, year two, but there would be, I think, some advantage in seeing, when can we phase in the TV, TV in Spanish, when can we phase as possibly English online? That might be a little bit sooner than we phase in Spanish online, so.
I think the first step is to hire translators. So until we've rectified our, our ability to hire the right people to do that job, other than the online streaming, the direct translation for us is going to be limited. So what we will do is bring forward a proposal that will have chunks of time as to when we will accomplish that, and when we predict the first Spanish-translated board meeting would be on TV.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, and so hopefully, we're looking forward to an action item very soon.
And when you bring your experts in on NOVUS, is it NOVUS?
Yes.
I hope they can show what they've done in this field, so we can see firsthand what it looks like.
They will.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We do not need to return to our consent agenda, so are there any coming events that we need to be aware of that board members want to share? School begins on Thursday. We know everybody out there is just getting ready, so we wish everybody a good beginning of the school, school year, and a continuation for those who are already in year round. Future agenda items? I think we have quite a list. Okay, then that brings us to adjourning our meeting.